Yeah.
Hey, call the worker, promote the town board meeting Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty five. It's now six P M. Start with roll call, please. Kramer.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Oops. Here, service.
Here.
I would like to thank everybody else for coming. Um, we may have some more people show up at after the executive session. We do have one coming up at near the beginning of the meeting here in a few minutes. So let's, uh, stand. All right, thank you. So call the changes. I know we do have a couple of changes. Um, we'd like to administer the oath of office for Mr. James before executive session. So we'll add an item two point five A. After, um, this section. Um, I think we had a couple of other things we wanted to add. Is that right? There's your service.
Um, yeah, Christmas under town theme updates, Christmas parade and party discussion. Um, and under public works, item E, I'd like a backdrop operator proposal discussion.
I'll make motion to approve of the agenda as added to.
Okay, now that was it. You didn't have anything for development?
No, the item B was you took care of it for me by putting that on there. So.
Okay, all right. So Linda makes a motion to accept. Um, do we have a second?
My second.
Aaron's second. Any discussion on this?
Pointing is trustee.
Yeah, we'll see that one get to. Okay, so I need discussion on the, uh, agenda changes. Uh, Dan?
Yeah, I'm looking at approval of sworn in and the final term in the agenda.
Uh, no, we did. We neglected to put it on there, but we do have some, um, we, we forgot to put it on be- before the meeting. But since we do have a item to discuss an executive session, you need to go ahead and get that out of the way.
I wouldn't think you could unless it was on the agenda. You do the appointment legally. Until the next meeting goes on the agenda, we wanted to move it from new business up would be one thing, but not what's not on the agenda. You're acting on statement of the fact without.
We're mending the agenda and adding one.
Yeah.
That was listed that you were getting sworn in.
It wasn't. It just added.
But it was supposed to be you to be able to vote on it.
I don't, I.
Um, so I think that we should go over the S D M L, um, thing that came out here recently. And they do make some comments on that saying that it is recommended to do that to make sure that you have everything on the agenda at least twenty four hours ahead of time. It's recommended, but not required. And so I think in this case, since we do have some discussions involving Mr. James for executive session, that it would make sense to, uh, add an oath of office ahead of that. It's your service.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that it's, there's no action to be taken by the board during that. This is the result of an action that was taken when he was appointed as the interim city attorney. So this is really just administrative.
Yeah, so.
Clerical essentially.
That's a, that's a good point there too, but I do appreciate you trying, uh, making sure that we're doing things the right way, Dan. And so, um, yeah, it's or do you have any other discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and with that, let's move, uh, to the oath of office. So. Stand out there. It's possible. We got him on camera here.
Anywhere at work, really.
Okay. Governor James, please raise your hand. And repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so your name.
Hi, James.
Having been appointed to the office of county attorney and for the county of Hermosa.
Having been appointed to the office of town attorney within and for the town of Hermosa.
In said county and state.
In said county and state.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the state of South Dakota. And the ordinances of said town of Hermosa.
And the ordinances of said town of Hermosa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best of my knowledge and ability.
Do the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform all duties of my said office of county attorney.
Perform all duties of said office of county.
Awesome. Okay. Okay.
Sign this. Senator, that's impressive.
Sure will.
Thank you. Okay, very good. So, um, I guess I'll make the motion to enter executive session, uh, for legal and possible contract reasons.
I'll set that six oh eight.
Six oh eight. Yes, ma'am. Two oh six on my clock.
Oh. Yeah, actually mine too.
Aaron's second.
Six oh six.
Okay, um, any discussion on that one? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, let's take a, uh, two minute recess and then go into executive session.
Great.
All right, let's uh make a motion to exit executive session.
At six thirty-three?
Thirty-three.
Just a second now.
I make the motion, Donna seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And um as far as I know, there's no motions resulting, but uh does the board agree?
Yeah.
No motions resulting. Okay, very good. Uh moving right along since the calendar approving uh October twenty-one, five regular meeting minutes. So I did have a chance to look over these um last week. Is there anyone else? Did anyone see anything that? Need to address?
I didn't. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Linda makes a motion to approve. On the seconds, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um so. Number five, conflict of interest. If any of the trustees have a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda, please state that now or when we get to that item on the agenda. Okay, uh moving along to uh six A. An opinion on the operational use of the backboard truck by private contractor. So. Mr. James, would you like to introduce this one and talk about your?
Sure. I just, I asked for summary of this issue before the meeting in terms of that to me, so. The concern was if we have somebody who's not a town employee using this vehicle, kind of what's our liability, how do we handle that? And so I said, well, it just sounds if you need a basically vehicle use agreement, you know, that needs to be drafted to just simple form, just to make sure that we're doing things by the book here and so essentially they just need to. Um your your clerk will need to go through this list with them to make sure that everything is met here, but um they essentially did approve, provide the proof of insurance and I kind of just put the limits of five hundred thousand to a million. Uh for the auto liability, that's the main one. Um but provide that car to that for that next stage before they operate and then I put specifically like if you use the vehicle. You know, and you haven't provided that proof that that use is unauthorized, right? So I think that's the main concern. Uh we also have some other provisions that are just, you know, you need to hold a driver's license or C D L which required, you need to, you know, follow town law and safety rules. The other parts are, you know, um if they have an accident, they need to report that to us uh within a timely way if they, you know, uh need to. Place the keys and they lose the keys, they need to, you know, their kind of owe ski money. Um they need to, if we ask for logs, you know, we get submit, one of the issues I ran into my past employment a long time ago was. Accidents, people using vehicles for personal use, so you get somebody claiming a contractor using this vehicle for personal reasons, you 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 have the right to demand a log, you know, of their mileage and stuff. Um so I think that's important for that reason. And um so I just, again, it's it's pretty basic, but it just covers, I think, the kind of things that you, that it could go wrong when you loan your vehicle to somebody like that.
Okay. Uh Aaron?
Yes, pretty much, I mean, this is about a straight to the point of the, yeah, like if.
So uh one thing too I'd like to mention, so Anthony did discuss uh when we were talking about this before. That any contractor that we have that's going to use. Our equipment is we basically uh rented to them in some way and then um. So there's, there's, I guess there'd be an exchange of funds going each way, so they would rent it from us, but we would also pay them for the services. Do you have an opinion on that?
Uh that's fine, I mean, um you could certainly add, you know, a payment to yours or something for whatever that rent is spent.
In town?
No, I'm done, you go ahead.
You're talking somebody out of town?
Yeah.
Talking.
Yeah, like a separate contractor. Uh Aaron?
Yeah, I think that might play in 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 possible future opportunities where other towns that need this sort of service. Would uh want to, and it's it's a contractor that we're utilizing in order to facilitate that, like what it's fair burn, right? I have much of a public works, right, but you still got pipes.
Of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this is good here, so um. Does does anybody in the audience have any comment on this one that we're basically doing a discussion here? And then. Maybe what we'll do is put this on the next agenda to approve this as our agreement for the backdoor traffic. Give everybody a chance to look over and ask questions and see if there's anything else we need to put on there. Uh Dan?
So I think to me, since you. To all the costs you have to put this together and wanted it for the purposes of coming. Contracted out, I I see where it says it'll be brought back in similar condition. Uh normal wear and tear, but to me. You're not using it exclusively for yourselves, you're only asking for more trouble and then when you do need it. And if something has broken, you wait on parts, circumstances aren't going to be in a very good condition and. I guess. Being a town's equipment, I'd want to be selfish and keep it town's equipment instead of you wanting it out to somebody else, that was. The purpose of buying it is so we'd have our own equipment, do our own work. And for all the years that we spent in mega bucks putting those things together and paying another contractor, now maybe the rewards has come back, but. I guess me to lease out doesn't sound good to me, I, all the years that I've been around programs like that, the equipment. Doesn't work, you know?
Okay, uh real quick on a, on that note, if it was. If we had a regular contractor that that worked for the town that ran it for us and was our regular contractor doing it. And so they were responsible for the maintenance and everything like that, so they're essentially.
A town employer.
Give or take, right, I mean, that would be a contractor, but they'd be for all intents and purposes a town employee, so um in that case. Would that make sense to then use that person to to pick jobs in other towns on the towns, on our town's behalf and and that town would pay our town if uh. If James is, check that out, make sure that's legal.
Exactly, right, that's a good vision to, you know, when they're our own people.
Yes, so.
Pressed that way, yes.
Okay, so then the the issue here is, is that uh just having. Somebody who may not regularly run it, who we don't have a working relationship with already, who we do not, we would not want to, in your opinion, we would not want to. Loan them the vehicle.
You're exactly right, thank you.
Uh Aaron and then Mr. James?
Get it, take it over to Scott.
Okay.
I I just wanted to make it clear this agreement, if you're looking at number four or. I'm just talking about use in this town for town business, this is not about releasing it to other towns or anything like that, that would have to be a separate document, I think.
Yeah.
Just about, who can use our vehicles in our town for our stuff.
Yeah, okay, so um in that case too, uh if if it was a town contractor that worked for our town. And on our town's behalf, another town hired them through the town. Through the the Promosa Town Office, would, do you think that would be? A covered under number four there?
Uh again, the way the way I've got it drafted, I mean, this this is not set in stone, but the paper I drafted is just. Uh that it's limited to town business, so again, you want it, that's that's a policy decision, right, it's not an illegal question, I mean, it's up to you guys to make that policy, uh but but um. The way I've got it worded is just for purposes in this town, just to make sure that responsible people are using this equipment.
Okay, great, thank you, um Aaron, did you have?
Do you just keep covering everything I'm doing?
Okay, great, Linda.
So I think this agreement is very good for what we need it for, and I think that a- at this point in time, we don't have any. Um any plans of running it out to any other city, and I think that once we get used to the equipment. Um that then, and we have a good operator, that then that would be a possibility, a- and we can have. A different contract written up for that, but as for now, I would say this is great.
Okay. Okay, um anybody else have any comments or anything, Chuck?
It never was intended to be loaned out. If somebody needed the services, they could buy the hour. Uh town's first hour would be wrong. We've got the conclusion here, just let somebody come get it and use it without the cage.
Right, yeah, thanks, Chuck. Jay, Linda?
Yeah, yeah, I was kind of on the same page, I don't, I don't see a future where we. Rented out like to where somebody else comes and literally rents it from us, because and I think we all know how people tend to create rental equipment. We would want our own team deployed out, do whatever the work that needs to be done and then the town offers get to benefit from it.
Okay, well, I mean, no, did you have any other comments?
No, no.
Nobody else has any other comments on this, let's go ahead and uh put this on the next agenda for approval, please, Terry. So um let's move along to six B. Um an opinion and request to draft agreement for the broke the rose water users. So uh Mr. James, have you been apprised of that situation?
I don't really know this about.
Okay, so um and and Chuck can probably fill in the blanks here if I don't. Get it all right, but. We recently had a water leak down there um near the Red Barn, just north of uh Main Street, right across from where Fairgrounds. He's into Main Street, and so there is a valve on the southeast corner of Main and Fairgrounds. And that valve goes under the highway and runs to a meter. Um on the north side of the highway, which then goes to some private lines, and one goes. It kind of jogs north and then goes east, is that right, Chuck?
It's in the pit there uh. On the lines uh services to Red Barn. And he's there in towards to the east, boy. Um. I've been kind of. Worried about this for several years, the landing was under the road, this steel pipe. And uh the needs can be replaced. Fortunately, it broke over. In an area of always talking about the liability of that pipe breaking under the highway. And creating a void that, you know, makes it create a sinkhole or whatever. The engineer and part of me that are. Uh jurisdiction stops that have meter head on the east side. And then was brought up, did, what do we even have in agreement whatsoever to serve the people? Going east, it's been that way for many, many, many years, and they have individual meters out there. Uh to. It gets red and it's all red. Or in a certain instance, if we went out and read them, if there was a discrepancy or something, problem. And we have maintained those meters along the way. So. I guess what it's come down to is you need to have some kind of an agreement to furnish these users water. And um. That would bring your responsibility back on to. For people that are on that line. Those two. Getting that good. Yeah, could be tapped on the north side of the road, which is abandoned, all that stuff that's under the road and but. Um. So tangible to have that down.
Yep, and. And I think the discussion with Anthony. Kind of points to the fact that if. An issue happened out there that for the town to address it, we would need to do an annexation out there. Because they're essentially grandfathered in with the current situation, but under our ordinances. We're not required to, but we can annex when. Somebody is uh required to get town utilities. And so. Um. Also. Have Anthony uh talk to you as well and and he can kind of fill you in on on the specifics on that. Any understanding with that, but I think the idea is with this agreement that that the users, water users and the town. Have a very clearly delineated relationship with how it is now, and then in the event that there is. An issue with that pipe that going forward, they would, I think they would be responsible for fixing it unless they wanted to annex and then. We could look at doing the annexation and then the town fixing it, does that, does that make sense to everybody there?
Okay, and these these people want an agreement to do this, or?
Well, I don't know that that's the case, but we do need something to to cover our end of it.
I mean, I told you a draft, I just, I didn't want to be drafted into the. Somebody's, nobody's the one asking for it, right?
So this has been a service that the town has provided to them for many, many years. Um I think ever since I've been around and uh I I don't think there was ever an agreement, I think it was done and maybe there wasn't a, you know. Shake your hand agreement way back in them days, I think now we just need to have a legal document agreement to um protect ourselves and and our.
I I I think I get the assignment, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys, are there any questions or anything from the audience on this one? I think we we talked about this on another meeting too, Dan?
The only other thing we'll say, ever talk about when Chuck had mentioned we bought a pipe under the road. Is we like it because of the loop and not having a dead end on it, so there was talks at some points of boring. Another line in there with you too, and servicing some still out same area and then updating it to a loop. And not a dead end, so.
You mean in the event that we do have to have a line going out east?
Correct.
So my understanding as well is that there is actually another pipe that services the church and the leave hand.
I'm going to bring them.
Yeah, that's north of the Red Barn and runs east, so it is possible that if we were going to. A line out east that we could loop it back to that one if we didn't want to make a loop. No, that's, I, I like that. Thanks for bringing that up. Yep, so Aaron's gonna illustrate that with our asset management system here. So um the pipe that we're talking about for the Brophy Water Users is that one there that he's pointing out. And then the other line that we just mentioned that's north of. The Red Barn and the Legion and the church is that one just right there going east west.
There is a six inch line that's already underneath the highway, so. Uh right there in that. North of that corner there, I don't know what that number is there, but. That would be an option to tap right there.
Yeah, so.
Our six inch line right there, so it could be tapped there and. Feeding the existing line at this point about. Disturbing anything. I would suggest that, so we go to an inch and a half or two inch tap there. And the engineer is not. In favor of shutting that main down to tap it, so it would have to be a wet tap. And my tap here probably doesn't go that big, so it would have to be. Farmed out to. Iron horse or something that does that type of.
Alright, very good. Um is there any other questions or anything on this one? Okay, I don't see any, so let's uh move along. So um item seven, uh the town in FEMA update, so. Uh this is our Christmas parade and Christmas party discussion, so anyone like to begin that one, Linda?
I just think that uh we need to get started on it. It's, it's. It's November, for goodness sakes. It's hard to even say, um but that's less than six weeks to the parade. And um. It takes a while to get this done, so uh we need ideas and, and workers and help and all that.
Well, if, if we had somebody with a CDL, I think we have a nice big truck that we could put in the parade.
Okay.
We could light it up.
I guess we're, I volunteered, I guess, didn't I?
And we could hook our snow machine up to it.
Oh, that would be funny.
Well, let's have onboard water. That would be.
Technically could build a rolling snow machine.
That would be funny.
Oh yeah, we need to get Benish in on this. Yeah, and if we wanted to do a float, I have plenty of trucks and things that can pull it. Any other ideas out there? For what we could do for the Christmas parade? Okay, I think that's a good start. Um and for the Christmas party. Um what did you all want to do for that?
We just need to do something. I, I. I don't know. I would say the easiest thing to do would be to um. See if we could get. A room, you know, big enough. And I, I don't know. I'd like to see the town invited to it, you know? I, I think that would be fun. If, I don't know how we could make that work, but we could talk about it and. Community Christmas party. Oh, the um. Legion, the old Legion building? Maybe, they would be willing. I have not been in there. I don't have a clue what it looks like, but we should maybe start doing some research on it and. And if we can research a few things and. For the Legion, yeah.
Uh Dan?
You can't use old lady building, it's full of bats.
That, that goes right along with the hotel motel time, folks.
Oh yeah. I guess I could reach out to Lane and see if uh he wants to rent it out. We could do a Christmas party there. So what's uh, what's a good day and time you guys are thinking?
Sixteenth would be a Tuesday night. It doesn't, oh yeah.
Why don't you do it the same day as the parade? You have the chili cook off and everything and.
Okay. We could just kind of tack on to that.
So we're just gonna crash it, pardon me?
So that's over at the community center like it was last year? Well, I could talk to him and see if we can uh, you know, do, do something for a. I know or whatever, so we could hang a banner up there too. Something, but. Maybe get a little more uh official approval than just show up and.
Well, we're here, we're gonna be there anyway.
I know.
And the whole town's gonna be there anyway, so it, it, it's, it's, we're all there. It's just. Not separated, you know, I mean, it's not a, a special. Deal.
Yeah.
Always, yes.
Oh, that's, that's a great idea. Thanks, Shelley.
Who's organizing?
The what?
What's going on there already?
Well, I would say that um. I think it's reasonable. Pardon me, Donna?
Um, no, I was working.
I don't know. Did you want to do a, a separate one too?
We could have, we could do something along with the last board meeting of the year also. And uh I mean, I don't know.
Just have, just come here early.
Yeah.
And then have uh some refreshments and stuff and just kind of have a. Yeah, would notice and have kind of a.
Maybe a potluck or uh. Or just order hors d'oeuvres and. Cookies or something.
You give me a mixer then?
We can't do a mixer here in this building. Still in the building. Oh, yeah, yeah. Then in the park business, it just goes there, you know?
So the sixteenth. Unless we did another, for me, it would be the second and the sixteenth, unless we did a different.
So do we just wanna? Just want to do one on the sixteenth? The getting together and.
I, I think that's just, yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea.
And so what time should we post it? So the meeting would be at six, obviously. So.
Four thirty?
Well, we could, we could move into seven, do the thing at six, and then just make sure we don't overload the Kipshanta.
Well, you never know. That's a great.
So it looks like we will, will crash the chili cook off and then we'll also um have a, a. Uh a people mixer here in this room here, um December sixteenth at four thirty. Before the last meeting of the year, so. We'll look forward to seeing everybody out there. So that's great, Aaron.
Has anybody here from Rizier on the Christmas decorations? I'll reach out for this week and see if she's, needs any help for how things are and how she's doing and.
Okay, yeah, thanks for following up on that. Okay. We do not have anything for engineer tonight, so that's a big topic there, but Anthony took the night off, so. I mean, I think he uh earned it. So moving on to planning and zoning. Um and it's approved the town planner to consult with the town attorney regarding the extratorial. Extraterritorial agreement with Custer and Pennington Counties. So uh I guess I'll just make the motion to approve. The seconds, so discussion on this one. It's kind of, kind of straightforward, Linda, would you like to?
Have you been into this at all? Uh yeah, the uh, the extraterritorial agreements between Custer County and us. And Pennington County and us, you've heard nothing about it, I take it? Okay, no, no, okay, so um. I- in the past, we had a three mile agreement with Custer County. Now our agreement is only a mile. And. Um, part of that was due to the fact that um. At the point that that was done. We did not have the resources to go out three miles, um should we need that. However, i- in some aspects, I hate giving up that territorial agreement for that, those miles. So um. I don't know if something could be put in there like uh. Um if, if we annex somebody that far out and, and we could provide them water that. Um maybe we would have um five years or ten years to, to make sure that that is provided to them. To that lot. I don't know if that's legal at all, Scott, but if you would check into that, I would appreciate it. Um as far as Pennington County goes, um it's already basically a mile out. Um, but with, with the new development we have coming is where this comes into effect, so. Um the planner will know more about that too, but. I just kind of wonder if we need to um go back to a three mile with Custer County, so if you would do some research on that, I would appreciate.
Okay, just Custer rolling the three miles in Pennington.
I think we gotta kind of go with Pennington as far as. What they think or what they feel. I, I think that's, you know.
So we don't currently have.
We don't have, we don't have anything with it.
We have, we have one with Custer County and I believe it expires in February of next year and. Terry Custer from the planning office had reached out to me if they would like to review it and maybe tighten it up a little bit. So we thought we'd do that one, then we can make one like Pennington County. Okay. And I, I believe Tent was working with Pennington County, but I don't know. We never got any.
Part of that was because he was working with. Um presidents too, so.
Yeah, and um also, you know, our town planner has been working on this too. And so. Um if this motion's approved. I'll reach out to, to him and you and kind of introduce you guys and then that'll kick this off, so. Um I did see some hands up there, uh Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, so uh it'd be nice to get that three miles, uh because I do get calls that actually do scan all the way. Further than three miles, the greater most areas, so I get calls all the way up. They call me directly instead of Custer. It's unfortunate, but special response, so it'd be nice to get that actual buffer. Knowing uh Pennington, they'll probably follow this three as well. Because it's just, it'd be easier that way, that's normally how it's worked out, but they're pretty. They need to get me on stuff too, so I have a couple of letters. That would definitely be a huge, huge help.
Okay, thank you. Uh Dan?
You know, we changed that, where we did not go to the three mile because uh. Of the plating jurisdiction portion, you know, just making us aware of it. So then we switched it to a mile to let us know that we were doing the plating. And a half mile on any other building accepting water or any of that type of situation. That's the only thing we can really handle, if we were ever going to annexation. So there was a form of the three mile, if there was any major plating. We only really had any direction on a one mile. Only that for our opinion and how long for any reaction, so. And it's just because of the exact, what they're saying, services. We could not provide anything beyond that. We were hoping we would. With the Northwater Shoreline, Pennington County, and that's why when we went to the extra territorial there. Was basically for the. President development. And then when we went from the president development, then we'd increase our area from there to another mile. So that we had them abilities of Pennington County, if they would allow. But we never got that far.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Um do we have any other discussion, Chuck?
Well, one of the things that Dan is correct, uh. One of the things you run into when you go three miles. You don't even have to go that far before you're encompassing. Uh ranch land and uh. We're gonna have immunity if you try to tell these people out there. A mile and a half out of town, what they can do and what they can't do with their property. So that three mile limit is a bad idea. A mile is gonna get you in enough trouble.
And should just uh, I mean, we're not trying to tell them what to do. It's just if they want something, if, if they're doing the building, if.
What you're gonna do there, I mean, you're either enforced or you don't.
Well, it would be enforced under the agreement, though. It wouldn't necessarily be the full ordinances of the town, is that correct? Alright, I think there's, I saw Leo and then uh Marshall.
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, say that one. You know, I, I hope that we get a voice in this. Because we're the ones that are affected by it and. Because it, it, we have no representation here. You know, if you look down bottom here again. You know, somebody three miles out has, you know. Doesn't have any right to even come and talk at the meeting. But yet you're wanting to put an agreement with us and uh. Three miles up, awful long ways. Terrible.
It is that way.
You know, that we at least get some view of it uh as landing.
Yeah, and, and uh. I will reiterate too, I mean, we're, we can look at adjusting the. The verbiage on that one, and if we, you know, depending on how this update of the agreement goes, we can a- adjust to include that. That span as well, but um any items on the agenda that do impact you, I mean, you are fully. Fully uh. Yeah, welcome to, to comment as, as you just did now, so anyways, thanks for that, um uh Mr. Marshall.
Yeah, so the, what I've experienced with that, even with the one mile we have. I haven't seen any issues. The only thing though, it does restrict on like. The law enforcement services in the area. Heavenly, that's the only thing I'm mainly concerned about, because I get a lot of complaints about it. And it just is a huge push against me because then Custer will refuse to call me, but even if it's outside, just like. Eat, like just outside the mile of my mile, I can get there within two and a half minutes, so still request somebody for Custer to come down and it takes. Thirty, thirty-five minutes. Or sometimes longer, depending on who's pushing.
So maybe the agreement needs to be somewhat bifurcated depending on what the service is. Whether it's uh like building permits is a certain distance, but law enforcement is another distance. Uh Dan?
We ran into problems with that one too, because Tracy Kelly wouldn't. Uh enforce that and wouldn't be able to defend that. When we go out of our municipal boundaries because of the certification, so we're really not. On that portion of it, so that's what we were told prior to is that. Basically enforcement side of. Basically enforcement side of it for third and the courts. On with the jurisdiction being Custer County Sheriff versus us in our municipal bounds.
Okay, I mean, uh.
But they called him into service to help assist. Was one thing, but for us to respond, still had to come from now. That's how we were directed back then.
Okay.
I just, I mean, his understanding is same as mine. I've been looking at it for a while. But I've basically regular citizen who's, you know. Arguing maybe they're wrongfully arrested or something by, by the marshal could use that to say, well, you know, you're not in your jurisdiction to do this. And so basically, you know, you, you, you create liability for him, maybe doing that kind of stuff. So I, you know, it's, it's, um. One thing that like be on a, on a welfare check call, you know, like that's, that's well intentioned and I get that. Uh, but if it's gonna have criminal consequences, you never know when you walk into a building case to be. Um, then, you know, you, you are creating some issues, but, but I was gonna ask, I mean, so it may be something to work on in the future to have. Maybe either cross deputization type agreements or you have maybe an agreement for assistance, you know, from Custer County. That's the type of agreement you might be able to come into where you can utilize them in your lawyer age.
Right, so, so from my experience so far, it's anything outside of my extraterritorial, then they have to ask. So if we had the extraterritorial, there's no issue. I've already talked with everybody at the sheriff's department. Everything's gold there. I can make arrests in my jurisdiction, even on that, uh, extraterritorial. I do it all the time. I've had no issues. Not being kicked back from me from Kelly, no. She's pretty good about it since they've had like a low influx of officers. So the turnover, it kind of makes it a little bit. From what I've been doing with, I've had no issues. Uh, the only issues I have was like. A single dispatcher was confused on what the actual extraterritorial was. So we were all on the fence about it until I found it. I was like, okay, so it's a one mile. So anything with that one mile buffer agreement is, I can go in that, do everything there as if anything, but also too, if you read. Uh, as, uh, the code of five laws for. Marshals or chiefs of police, still law enforcement, still enforce state laws, all that function. So I'm still law enforcement, even if I'm in the county. There is no difference between me and Martin at all. And that's the way it's written. So that's how I always interpret it.
Uh, I'll try and develop an opinion to help sort of like.
I've just been reading a lot of it. So it's me and Martin have been going over stuff like that. I think it's hard. Just trying to figure our, our spots out.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Um, just, we're just. Make sure, for a little bit of clarification, we're talking about this extraterritorial agreement. But there's a independent statute references to that extra mile. Outside of municipal bounds with or without an extraterritorial agreement. There's certain, certain, um, certain capacities of a municipal. Police officer. It's limited and it's, it's language pretty much tailored towards like, um. Well, for the most part, I think it's if you're chasing somebody inside the municipality and they run out. I think that's principally why the statute is there.
Fresh pursuit.
Yeah.
If you're in the fresh pursuit, usually you can leave your territory.
Yeah.
You can even cross the. Boundaries Canada and the US and that, under that doctrine, if you're in a hot pursuit.
I'm just going.
Don't go that far.
Well, I can't, I'm just going basically how me and the Custer County are doing. So anything with that one mile buffer, I patrol outside of that still with, or not outside of that one mile buffer, but within that one mile buffer. Um, and then from there, it's, uh, they're, they're pretty tell about it. I've had an issue so far. Um, unless they ask me to go anywhere further, I just go and sit on some phone or whatever. I'll go to a stop on a hit and run form if they needed it. It's pretty easy to do. But that three mile buffer though, like I'm saying, what our understanding is that it's just, it's just that helping out more in the area.
Do you have a motion on court?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve, uh, the town planner to consult with Mr. James regarding the extraterritorial agreement. Probably agreements with the county. So, yeah, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Carrie's on to claims. Guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve claims as well.
One second then.
In the seconds. So any discussion on this one? We'll take a minute to look at these real quick.
Carrie, that G-Works annual subscription, did that go up this year?
Um, yeah, that's what it is. It's gonna be the same for two years.
For two years now?
Well, eventually go into the cloud.
Yeah, that is painful.
Bird, yeah. Nineteen ninety-two software.
Anyone have any, uh, adjustments they'd like to make to the, to the claims? Okay, y'all comfortable with any discussion on this one going to a low? All right. Motion to approve claims on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Carrie's on to law enforcement. Um. Mr. Marshall, would you like to give your report?
Yep. So how much to report on? Cause a lot of things have to stay confidential, frankly. Uh, just getting a lot of, uh, wildlife calls. More of that's going on. We got more skunks. I've already dispatched over four, but now we got little ones running around somewhere on why they're producing. So keep an eye out, calling. Uh. Really not much at the moment. We just. Just be careful when you're on the road, some, you know, your phones. Uh, watch the speed limit, especially when that light's blinking. I'll eat you if that light's blinking. Those are everything. Um, you know, other than that, everything's been pretty, pretty smooth. Just, uh, a lot of, uh, really call, call service calls in the middle. Six a.m. it's on. But the rest of the week's been, but I can't give too much of that for him, so, but it's been.
Okay.
When do you leave the store?
Uh, twenty first.
Would you like to take questions from the board or the audience?
If any concerns or questions.
Anyone have any questions, concerns, accolades even? Whether.
I'll, I'll go ahead and drop down to the Custer County log that I see here. And, um, the total calls was forty-six, I believe. Um, forty-six and just, um, your number again is. Two one two A. So on this report, I see that, uh, if I added correctly, um. You responded to thirteen of these calls. Um. There was eleven of them were paper service, eleven were traffic stops. Um, what is the difference between the traffic stop and the traffic comp?
So the traffic stop is if I'm driving and you have to see the speed limit, I'm stopped. You can stop or if you have some type of issue with your vehicle, like tired windshield completely, you can't see out of destruction. Uh, you're missing both headlights, high fire on the ignition. Uh, those are traffic stops, speeding, etc. So something like that. And then. That one we had, what was that? Was that a comp?
Comp, yeah, where's it? Page four. Yes. Second one on page four.
Yeah, traffic complete. Uh, I believe that was. Selling stock it has. So I'm a different. So we have an interesting one on that.
We actually. Okay, there's actually two of those in this. There's one repo, uh, one ambulance call, three truant officers. Um, so just, I, I just like to.
What does that mean after the address that goes thirty-nine point nine feet? What does that mean?
Thirty-one point nine feet? Are you looking at the CFS or the?
The feet behind the left.
The, the left. And one says one seventy-one.
For the last column on every page, there's a.
It just states, um, exactly because it's GPS, so it states exactly where I put my call in and where I'm at. So it'll say Walter Street thirty-six point nine feet, because I'll be at a certain distance. And I'll tell them exactly where I'm at or what address I'm at. So if it pays me there. If something happens to me there during this call, they know exactly where I'm gonna be and they sent help. So if I'm not responsible, I'm not gonna take it on the twenty, twenty-three, I have thirty seven. So I don't get the mic up.
Eddie.
Um, I was wondering like in the mornings, are you. Stopping people that are really driving fast when the lights are on? Cause I noticed that. Um, some of them are driving really fast through there.
Yeah, so sometimes, uh, when I'm running the radar, some cars look like they're going kind of fast, uh, especially if they're smaller, they'll, they'll look a little faster, but my, my radar will pick up like fifteen or under. Um, just depends on what we're working with or how I explain this. So. Radar's hard to explain. It's, I'm not, I'm not a Doppler guy, so I can't get too deep into the science, but. A smaller car going downhill, you know, it'll pick up speed, but as soon as they're past that sign and they're going a little faster, they can pick it up after the sign.
Right.
That's what I've been informed on, but I, I usually get smaller cars will show. Not so much of a higher speed that it looked a little faster than bigger cars I've caught. Doesn't look fast, but they're going fast. It's just weird how I've been dealing with it and me and Custer, when I went to radar training for it, it's weird. But that's just the best we can do on that one. But if I, if they're within that zone and I catch it and they're getting it automatic, if there is no interference, but it's like, you see the sign, no, you're still see them.
Cause I've seen them going pretty fast through there.
Yeah, it's usually when the signs go on.
Yeah, no, especially when the signs are going.
I'll tell you more on that, cause sometimes I get called up and something else on there.
Okay, um, do we have any more, uh, log discussion from the law enforcement committees? No, all right. Um, so we're on to eleven C, approved change in title from Town Market, which you chief, uh, please.
So there's a reason behind that. And that's because I made a stop and they thought I was a US marshal and they freaked out. They didn't believe that I'm actually living. But all the now I get from the DOD for running backgrounds for them, just as police department for promos, because that's how we register to them. Here and then. Every other department thinks I'm a cheap police officer. Good. It's just weird because my stops, maybe they'll not believe that I'm a marshal. They think it's some kind of hokey joke, fake thing.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, he had discussed with, with, with me the other day. I went. Statute, it's a chief of police and marshal are the same. Identical position. It's just you, it's marshal is kind of just like one school way of saying it. And yeah, it does, people. Especially from out of state seem to have trouble. Locals tend to know what a marshal is, but people from out of state, they're like a US marshal.
Yeah.
It's like two things really changed, like two of the wordings as in the, uh, organs even out there to small stuff.
All right, well, would anyone like to do a motion to approve to, uh, give a vehicle to have the rest of the discussion?
Um, I will make a motion to approve. The change of the law enforcement title from marshal. To chief of police.
Okay, is there a second on that one?
Okay, it's not. It does, that though, I did speak to other officers and they, they don't, some of them don't understand.
I get that, but. In our little area, just is so fitting, I think, to say marshal, but I, I also see where you're coming from, so I don't know.
Where, where do they call the? But the ones in custom, they, they're sheriff's.
Yeah. And because we're in a, uh, county, it's, it'd be a police. But I talked to Decker about it too. He was even like, yeah, I feel it. It's one of those things, because they were, we were having a whole discussion about it. He's like, I don't know what that even is. It's, people think I'm a US marshal, I'm holding on. And so they freak out. Like I've had a guy pull us on it. You're not reporting me. I'm like, what? What are you talking about?
Okay, I'll second for discussion then. How about that? Have a vehicle for discussion. Okay, that's very interesting. Uh, did you have any questions, Donna?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just. Cause we've always had.
I know.
But I guess it's time to change, Linda.
Well, I, I mean, we do have to change with the times. I, I, you know, and it. I don't want you to be in a position where it's bad for you, uh, obviously. Um, there's absolutely no difference. That, that's hard for me to believe you understand that. I mean, chief of police to me sounds like you should have twenty people underneath you and, and blah, 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 blah.
Top marshal. I had, I was talking to one of these guys from, uh, Pennington. He's like, where are your deputies at? I'm like, I haven't been to. If he knew what they were, he's like, oh, uh, can you pull the tombstone? I'm like. This guy, yeah, immediately wire her. But, uh, chief of police is the title under town marshal. Um, the only thing that's not like that is constable, but constable, uh, if you look at some of the legislation from that. Does it do with, that's security guard of the town kind of.
All right, it's just. All right, Aaron then, Dan.
I just wanted to ask, Scott, can you think of any significance between the titles? Cause I don't think it matters. Right, it's just a, just a name.
I used to work in Dodge City, Kansas, so.
Okay, Dan.
So what is it, a thousand dollars change decals? I don't know. Well, you could, I know back in the day it was that for the wraps. So it's probably more now.
I had Rassler, right? From when I was doing my own cars for police law enforcement, I had boxer ready to go. If they need to change it, and that's an easy one. Um, you need my buddy going and putting on cars, it's pretty professional down the TCS. But I understand where you're coming from.
It is expensive just to have that on.
It's like having a whole heart repainted, but without all the paint.
You know.
And your badges and?
Um, badges I have, uh, kind of makes them out, uh, of Argo. He does the same ones for, uh, Argo PD. And he was willing to shoot me a design, have one made for free, just to have it posted out and then. Any further red this pass out would be, uh, cost, we obviously, it'd cost something, but the first one for me, cause my buddy is in the military, he kind of shoot one out.
Okay, uh, Trey then?
Well, the chair. Is generally countywide and a marshal is a city. And a marshal is usually appointed by the board where sheriff is usually elected. So there are some differences and I would think there would be differences in the, um, salary as well. So I would ask for it to.
Well.
To not consider.
Well, it gets chief of police, not sheriff. Uh, chief of police and marshal are exactly the same. Sheriff's a whole other box.
Yeah, so just specifically we're talking about going.
Only appointed a difference.
Marshal to chief of police, not sheriff. Yeah.
I was just asking maybe to make about it a little bit, especially, you know, and you're thinking about the cost of it too, and. We've been kind of managing that tight. So it just seems like, you know, not, not something to decide tonight.
I got a question. What's the cost? She don't mind.
Well, I mean, making all the changes to the.
Two changes for the vehicle. I have decals.
I'm not.
Not that bad though. You look at it, it's already been done. You have everything you need to put on it, it should be fine.
All right, let's, let's just, uh, direct our comments to the chair, please. I saw Aaron's hand and then Donna.
Um. I was thinking about a motion, um, from Mendonah. I was gonna make the motion, but it slipped my mind.
Okay, Donna.
What else? I, I think. We should wait and have to check the cost of some of the things for us. As far as we're going to cost to change this lettering and badges.
It shouldn't be your responsibility.
If I add prior to everything, I was doing my own cars for, uh, Alaska. So I had all kinds of stuff. All of the vehicles, man, I was, you know. On that particular portion of the vehicle, but. But I totally understand. I'm with you guys on it. I get it.
This has absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about, but it's law enforcement. I really like your hat, but I, uh, I have a. A problem with you advertising Montana over.
I have a North or South Dakota one, maybe.
Okay, good, thank you. I just noticed that, sorry.
I know that, but being a second talk on that too, he's like, what's that? I'm like, I like rattling dude, it's nothing to do with Montana.
Okay.
Well, let's get back to the motion on the floor then. So, um. Well, let's get back to the motion on the floor then. So, um Aaron, did you, did you have a, an amendment for the motion?
Um, not necessarily yet, but I'm trying to, I, I
If you'd like to, to talk through your concern.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of, um, because I think, I think we are kind of, there's a couple things we've drawn up, one that there's like a historical value to the, to the marshal here, um, there's some questions about um, the difference in what a marshal is and a, and a, and um, and the chief of police is re- really just educational. Um, ever, I mean, I dig, and I know Eric, there's no difference on paper, it's a municipal police officer, I guess maybe marshal is when it's mostly like a standalone, but it doesn't really matter. Um, just trying to think of a way to, do we need to do this in a sit on this for a couple of weeks and think about it, and then?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Um, Connie, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say, they're trying to have a good rapport with the citizens and our new chief of police or marshal. We're not in the car, we're not pulling people over, we're not watching these people freaking out, thinking they're being deported. Where if it's, if it's the same thing, it's gonna be good. With people to be called the chief of police, and he can fix the car for reasonable amount of money, I say we do it and keep the good flow going between him and the citizens.
Okay, thanks, Connie. Um, are there any more? Any uh, more comments or questions on this, this one? See, Mr. Service Fever, while you're heading there.
I'm trying to come up with a proper.
For the title alone, all of now, you can get it, just watch, I have to be background for the DOD, that through the system. Yeah, because that's what they, that's what they keep saying. It's interesting, and if we're in about contractors.
Okay. All righty, are you crafting any of?
I'm crafting a motion, sorry, yeah.
Should we uh, let this guy fail and kick it through the next?
We can do that, we can let it fail, and then I'll make this one by the time I'm ready.
Okay, well, it looks like uh the board is, is willing to take this into consideration, but probably we need some more information on the cost associated, and then also give us some more time to look it up. And uh, so, uh, all those in favor? All those opposed? Uh, three eyes for opposition, do we have?
I, I, voting it down.
Okay, so four, four eyes to opposing the amendment, so the mo- motion fa- or sorry opposing the motion, so the motion failed. So I would just like to ask Terry that we uh we move this one to the next meeting? I think we need a motion for that, right? So this one was kind of unresolved at this time, so that's good. Uh, Aaron?
I could make another motion, and if nobody likes it, it's fine, just don't second it, but um
Okay.
Motion to approve use of title, chief of police by marshal alias with no changes of, to duties of, of pay pending further further
Investigation.
Investigation into the distinction. So basically, he can, he can transition, and like, if he, he can get chief of police or just police as his tags instead of marshal, so we yeah, so we can not worry about people asking him.
Okay, Aaron makes a, any motion? Um, is there a second to that one? Okay, I don't see any seconds, so motion fails. So I think, I mean, I'm okay with just taking this up at the next meeting. I apologize that we didn't get a quick resolution on that. Uh, I guess I can call you Mr. Marshall for now, but uh
I'm still like putting it in place because of all the issues I've had with it, plus a lot of the law enforcement issues, okay, I have to do my job as a marshal, they're like, they don't know. Like I had Decker explain to them that I can do my job, and it's like, okay, yeah, I'm something.
All right, well, I apologize for that, and hopefully you'll um get, get the information we need to take this up at the next meeting.
Of course.
So thank you for that. Okay, um, I don't believe we have any complaints.
On the complaint, so.
Okay. Do we have a complaint?
No, it's just, I would like to make a written petition to remove something that's been on for just about a year.
On the complaints?
No, it's not a complaint, it's a sign.
Well, that's on the work order, but we're not there yet.
Yeah. All right, uh, so did you have your hand up for complaints, Kathy? Okay, so is there any compliments, anyone like Levy, or do you have a complaint or compliment? Okay, there, there, there we ask what they are.
No, I just, I just wanna say, um, the last time I believe we voted to make the full time, how's it going?
Pretty good so far, uh, a little more busy than normal, that's okay, I like it, easy to go on.
Good.
So when are you, when are you reading this time?
Uh, well, I gotta get everything ready for the package coming up, uh, either tomorrow or the next day. Well, at the house, yeah, that's gonna be happening soon, just waiting on, that would be the subject, the connection on that should be clear.
Oh, you bought a house?
Yeah.
Congratulations, and thank you.
And I made sure it was close by, so I'm like, I'll sign it like that.
Good, oh, nice, thanks.
You don't wanna leave everybody hanging somehow, some way, you know what I mean, oh, you see the claim, you get it. They like three half, four minutes, I'll get there.
And thank you, thank you for being here. Like, like Connie said, I think the whole community appreciates it.
What I, what I sign up for, so, I know I do it, so.
Yep, thank you, Marshall, uh, for all you do, and as far as I know, I'm aware, you're doing a great job.
Yeah, I'm not able to like, yeah, I mean, I get them when they're, when I'm dealing with somebody, yell that, but.
Okay, very good, well, let's move on to public works. So streets, uh, Aaron, do you have any updates on those?
No updates on streets, I'm late.
Okay, streetlight repairs, Chuck, where are we at with that?
I think there's four that we got written. There's some that are gone. Really know about. You made aware, what's one they're out. Some of them are not completely out, there's monkey, you know. A color or a block back on and water is pretty it's kind of a rolling wall.
All righty.
Sure, uh John is gonna bring my client on here, and I guess he'll be waiting to parse the keys or something, maybe it's not where it's at. And uh I don't know where that's at. And uh, we look at it, we have a couple of those. Free contract, and that's that.
Yeah, I, I need to talk to Dan, we need to go through the paperwork, Dan, so.
So what do we talk, what, you keep telling that there's uh, this contract, we have not seen a bill, or nobody's known anything about it. Other than you and Dan.
It, it's been uh, in the works for quite some time, uh, starting, uh, I believe last February.
I don't think we've seen a bill or anything.
I know, well, that's, we need to go over, he, he did uh quite a lot of work, so we need to go over and parse out what he did, and, and make a good record of it, and then, as compared to um the amount approved, and basically, it will show that, that he went above and beyond what we requested him to do uh, back then, so. But it's uh, just gotta find some time in my busy schedule, and, and so does he, we need to go over those numbers. So, unfortunate, but that's still in the air, so, uh, Dan, did you have any addition to that?
Yeah, I did on the streets, you know, the comments that have been made throughout the past year, uh, last meetings and stuff about doing just uh, bandages on the streets, on the patches, and so on, so forth, and I mean, you know, it's one thing on that, where there's a purpose and reason why the streets are the way they are over the last twenty years for drainage, this is why we've been trying to get to that point of actually doing some storm drains, because if you put problems in some of the roads, you're gonna flood properties and cause more problems, and I need to go through every street in this town and tell you why it is any condition it is, and why the work was done to it. Um, so, it's a purpose where I have no problem going through street by street by street. And I know with Aaron, um, I appreciate the work he's been doing, but the ballast rock is gonna be a major problem when burgies goes below stone, because it's all gonna be in somebody's yard. Uh, which I don't know if Chuck has made mention of any of that or not, and and I would appreciate the comments as far as, you know a landscaper basically has done patchwork on the yards out of the streets and put bandages on would kind of be help within the person who's making the statements, and leave it alone, but you know, I offered two months ago to go up and volunteer my services to fix our main sales tax provider at the truck stop, and patch and fix everything else for free, as I've been doing for some time, just for the cost of gravel and or help on the dumpsters, and was never offered that opportunity, so that was invited and offered out there. So, for our purposes and reasons, if a person goes to doing a lot on the streets, I'd love to be involved with Anthony and Aaron and uh point out why they are, and what has to be done to protect them, so I appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Uh, Kathy?
Um, on our street, they tried, they, well, when they did the alleyway, they made a bump, which works fine, but that road is constantly got, now it's got ruts in there along the edge where the water just constantly runs down there. They tried to fix it, they come over, they filled it up with gravel again, and they filled it up with, just pushed the dirt into it, it washed us out, and then it runs down into the main road on Main Street, it grew runs down onto there, it, it's not getting fixed, I mean, this is a constant thing, and in the winter time, when they do, when they plow our roads they shovel the gravel into where, into a pile where I have to mow, and then it hits rocks uh, my mower does, which ruins the blade. You know, I wish they wouldn't do that, I mean, I wish they'd put the gravel somewhere else, spread it around or whatever. But when they do the snow or snow removal, it's, it's constantly, they just shove it into our into that side ditch there, and it it's horrible, it's really hard on our mower, because they just pile it up and they move it over to the other side where there's no, um, where they don't mow it that much, or whatever, just I just wish they'd do that, and get that fixed, that where it doesn't run down into the main, you know, on Main Street.
Okay, all right, thanks, Kathy. Uh, Chuck?
There's no thin lines, it means snow and gravel. Although if you're gonna take snow completely off, then it's gonna be high spot, and whatever it is. Well, if you set your shoes high enough, so it's not edging in the gravel, and you're gonna lose two inches of snow on the roads, and it turns, turns sides. Oh, I see, the ideal thing is to pick out this road. And you don't, you know, you don't put clean rocks on, but I said you go foul, because they can't segregate between the two, either leave snow, or you take the gravel, dirt, whatever.
Leave the snow.
You're into a standing situation.
Yep, okay, all right, well, thanks for everybody's comments. Um, so we're on to twelve D, approved protocol for notifying residents, I need to reach out to Anthony on that, and see what he got with that, uh, obviously, he's not here tonight to comment on that. Yeah, we table that for the next one. Um, I know he did reach out rapid, and at the last meeting, we were waiting for uh response from them. And so now we're on to twelve E, back truck operator proposal discussion, and I think uh, Aaron would like to introduce that one.
Yeah, I left copies, so I put together a proposal to uh certainly, run the back truck, um, kind of been getting familiar with it lately, um, that guy's from Hill City today, learned how to run it and everything. Um, it's uh, it's something that needs to be done, and it kind of needs to be done it needs to be in motion soon, so um, there's copies over on the counter, I don't know if anybody picked one up, I'd like to yeah, just a proposal to basically run the back truck for twenty, I think I put in there for twenty five dollars an hour for me. And then a team of up to two other people, um range of twenty two to, or twenty four to thirty two. Um, yeah, uh, it's, it's a serious piece of equipment, it's not something to be taken lightly. Um, I have way more than enough experience dealing with such situations. Um, but we do need it running, Anthony is already out cameraing, testing their cameras, and they wanna start really cleaning up, cleaning up the lines, um. So yeah. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but uh.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is just for the discussion, so if you'd all have any questions or comments for the board or for Aaron on his proposal, um yeah, if you guys didn't get a copy of it, it sounds like there's copies over there. For the, anyone have any questions for Aaron on this? I mean, I know we, I know we do need somebody to run it, um I think he's more than capable of doing that safely, uh, if we need to look at insurance issues and stuff like that, that's something that we'll have to do, uh, but we do need somebody quickly uh, to kind of work in tandem with the camera situation that's going on, and so, um, I appreciate Aaron stepping up and driving this, and making himself available for that, so, uh, Bonnie, did you have any?
Did you, did you have to get an CDL to do that?
So it's, if you look through the proposal, I don't have a CDL, I looked into it, and I'm gonna be waiting on Scott to look a little further digging into it, or as a municipal employee, it can be operated within town rights of way, cannot be operated on state or county highways. Um, possibly maybe able to cross, but this is worst case scenario, I don't want to, so in my, in my proposal is the town needs to have somebody who does have a CDL available, if it needs to be moved across either state or county road. Um, but as far as once it's, once it's off highway, when it's on town streets, if it's in town, the right of way, uh, that's a different ballgame. Um, it is, it's, it's a lot of machine, and it could be
You can do it.
Yeah.
You drive it now here, Linda?
London. We went up together, you drove it home.
Yeah, yeah, you just got the CDL too, so you know, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Aaron on this one, or for the board? Okay, well, uh, if you didn't get a chance to check it out, there, it sounds like there's some copies over there, so grab one of those on your way out. Uh, so moving right along to economic development. Linda?
Yeah. It, this is needed pretty fast, you're saying, so, I mean so how about if, if we do this, we go ahead and however you wanna say it, lightly approve it, so that work could be done if Anthony needs it before the next meeting. And during that time, Scott will look over the contract, um, make, see if changes need to be made, and the rest of us can too. But um, we'll But um, we'll lightly agree that he can do this for two weeks. In case it's needed. If, I mean, they're ready to work. We need this work to be done, is my thought on that.
Uh, Mr. James?
Uh, so I just wanted to touch base on the, I I do think you need to incorporate that five thousand dollar limit. There's a sugar reward somewhere, but hopefully that's the most you can get. So I did have a chance to look up what happens if you go over that.
I think it's class two misdemeanor.
Yeah, it's it's a class one misdemeanor.
Yeah, yeah. I, yeah, so I put in there a limit of two hundred, it's over twenty-four dollars an hour. Five thousand dollar limit, limit of two hundred and eight hours a year. Yeah, I put it all in there. Yeah.
Have that, yeah.
Yeah.
Prominently displayed.
I know they're starting the camera. Aaron and I have talked about this. He's capable. It just. The volume of pressure that truck will put out, if you don't know exactly what you're doing. You're gonna rupture lines, you're gonna blow water up through somebody's toilet, you're gonna, it would be nice to put, make a few calls maybe. There's several companies in Rapid that do it. There's so, there's several trucks around. Maybe somebody would be willing to come out and consult with Aaron for a day or two. That that's ran it, that's operated it, that, not this specific truck, but. Okay, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of things that can get damaged if, and if you find tree roots or something, then you gotta track close.
Yeah.
I would just like to see somebody come out and show them this is what you do in this situation, this is what you do in this situation. This is not one of the things you wanna just. Figure, you know, find your way through.
Yeah, so um, I know that I I think that's a good idea. Get somebody more experienced to come in and and help kind of do some O T O on the job training and things like that. Um. As far as approvals tonight, I mean, I don't have a problem calling a special meeting. If we do find somebody and we can go ahead and just do it through a special meeting and then uh. I think we have order or uh duck discovered there. So do you have a comment here?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I may, I was thinking now that I'm after the fact, Justin was down here today. They got a different rig. They went from a truck. To a trailer. I'll, maybe I'll give him a call and see if they have it scheduled to where I could go up and watch them run theirs. Or I could find somebody else in the area who has one that's that's run regularly and I can go do some O J T if they're willing to let me and. And get a feel for it. But as far as in the interim, I still need to put some water in it and make sure it pumps. Um, that Justin did give me a lot of the warning. I, one of the first things I asked him was like. Has any, tell me about the times when you were running this truck and suddenly felt like you were in danger. That's what I wanna know about, because that's what I wanna avoid. Um, so they kind of broke those things down for me and. Slow and steady is the start. When you're learning a machine that big, that powerful. Yeah, they said, they joked, he said, you could suck the idea out of somebody's head. Yeah, it's not, yeah. But yeah, no, I think I'm gonna find some people that I can watch running.
I think in its current state, we're not really gonna be able to use the.
The back, still no back.
But we can jet with it in its current.
Right.
Are, are you willing to kind of make some calls and see if there is a. A, an operator or contractor that'd be willing to come down and. Find out how much that amount is and we can call a special meeting and see what the board thinks about that.
Of having somebody come down to do training versus going.
Vice versa or going there?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it it might be helpful to do some onsite training with the truck that we have on the lines that we have. That we could practice on the sewer, empty sewer line that Anthony was practicing camering on. As he moves out of there, so.
Yeah.
So guys, one of the guys from Hill City, we could maybe pay to come down and. You could work with him, you know?
That's a good idea.
They, they, they hadn't run it in like five years. I think they're still, I don't know if they got their new one yet. I don't know if they're using it yet, but they got a different rig. So they'll be familiar with all, with the basic principles. Yeah, I'll find, I'll find, I'll figure out a, a way to put it, something that O J T plan and.
Okay, yeah, and and let me know and well, if uh we need to move quickly, we'll do a special meeting on that. I'm okay with that. So, anyone have, have any closing comments on this one? Duck?
Hill City's had, they have come down and through the pages, it's not a big deal, you know, you know. They went to a trailer machine because the truck was too big to do a lot of their. Get into the tight areas where they needed to be. Hill City's pretty confined where their sewers are and stuff, so. That's the reason why they wanted to create a knowledge and they didn't have it because they weren't going to turn loose on this truck and go again. They had that. Piece of equipment. On hand, so I'm sure they'd be kind of willing. I've been around them for years and years, you know, the. Big thing is if you use five thousand pounds, of course, you're better. Applying and when it's coming back. You have to be careful because we can crank it up to two thousand pounds and that's enough to do damage.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's all in the operator.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Ready? Um, so moving along to economic development. Yeah, so we do have that resolution establishing the economic development committee that was tabled back in July. Oh, we have the resolution in the package. We do. And I'm, I'm okay with just continuing to. Proceed as we have, but uh, did you have a comment on that, Aaron?
Yeah, I can make a motion to table it again until. Let's go with second meeting in January.
Second motion.
Into seconds, do we have any discussion on that one? Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, I'm precarious. And we do have on here the ambulance meeting. This is a report from there.
Um, I don't know who actually, who actually.
I asked, I said, I thought that should be on the agenda to discuss because there were three of us there and and. Um, just an acknowledgement that they have done that and it was done well. And um, it it obviously is a big deal when all five county commissioners. And the uh deputy. Sheriff comes, it's obviously a big deal. It's uh, it means a lot to the whole county, so. I don't know if Leo has heard anything since that meeting from anybody. Um, do you know? Do you know the way that the county is thinking on this? Please, sorry, I just.
Do I know? The, the question is, do I know the way that the county is thinking? Their. Tunnel vision.
Yes.
Solve the problem. And, but. However best and. For anybody that wasn't at the meeting, basically, if we wanna have continuing ambulance service in this area. Where this area could be Eastern Custer County, it could be Southern Pennington County, it could be. Over to Rockerville, it could be the Cheyenne River, south uh. Somewhere near Fairburn and Buffalo Gap. Uh. There's a lot of options of how an ambulance service could be provided, but there's only one. Critical thing that has to precede everything, and that is forming an ambulance district. Which then gives you taxing authority to to raise revenue to fund or to pay. Uh, for that ambulance service, which is another whole. Uh, situation because you could provide your own, you could contract it, you could uh come up with a couple of different things. Uh, so the, the commissioners have not given. I don't, I, I guidance, uh, because they don't want to mandate a solution, you know, they, they, they charge. That we should come up with harsh solution and bring it to them. And and all they really gave us was a timeline. And that was that we had to. Have something in place by January one of twenty twenty seven. If we back up, uh, a tax request would have to go in by September thirtieth. Of twenty twenty six, which would mean that you'd have to have your board of directors from the district in place. You know, let's just say even a month before that. Which means and our focus has been on having a, an election to approve the creation of this. At the primary election, which is June, a third or fourth, something like the first part of June. Which means that we have to have the resolution to the county commissioners and to the municipalities, in this case, Hermoson Fairburn. Probably by the first of March. And in order to have that resolution, we have to have defined what are the boundaries. Of the prospect or prospective or proposed district. Which means that, you know, we've probably got. Somewhere sixty, ninety days to talk to a lot of people and find out, you know, what is their real interest. I, the simplest would be to just, okay, let's just only take care of our own. You know, Eastern Custer County, that's it. But, but I think we can do better than that, and I think we can. By including some other areas like the Fanee County just to the north was here. Even because we'd be doing them a service by including them or being nice neighbors or anything on the surface. But then I'll also be greedy, we could get an increased valuation through our taxing. Uh, it worked better without adding a, a lot of population. The, the real problem is that the number of calls into this area. On one hand is, is, is a lot, on the other hand, it's minutes. It's only a hundred and forty calls a year. It's tough to justify uh an ambulance. Setting somewhere out here on a hundred and forty calls a year. Because an average ambulance in Rapid City goes on four thousand calls a, a year. And if we had an Amazon here for a hundred and forty. The cost is gonna be the same. And so it's really hard to justify that, but. I'm not saying that, you know, we're all options are still on the table. Uh, so that was kind of the synopsis of the meeting. What was that, a week ago or tonight? Uh, right now we have a second forum on the ambulance scheduled for December eleventh. Uh, I think that's a Thursday night. Yeah, okay, Thursday night. And uh, ambulance would be again, the top, one of the topics. Uh, there's potentially two other topics, which I think are a little bit shorter. Well, I know they'd be shorter. One is that Black Hills Electric Co-op would uh discuss what. What progress they're making on moving their uh facilities over here. And the second, or excuse me, the third one would be the Battle Creek Fire District would explain the results of the op count, you know, why. Uh, why we did what we did in terms of opting out and increasing the, the mill levy through the fire district and. Lots of questions beforehand when we were talking about that nobody's ever come to meetings and. What we saw was, so we're gonna take the initiative and go to the public forum and force people to listen to us.
And that meeting will be where?
Uh. We, we're, we're kind of bouncing whether it would be at the school or the beef bar. You're leaning towards this. Leaning forward the school. Yeah, we're sending a deal of pairs to find out if we can have that common area for that. Yeah, I, if, if many people shows up, it's just last week, the region is.
Right.
Oh, that's a good problem.
Yes, it is a good problem. Yeah.
So any other questions? I talked too long, Rick.
Uh, is there a reason why, I mean, in, in a lot of places, your fire department has your ambulance service? Can that not happen in our community or could it happen?
It's by state law. Okay, well, first I have to back up just one step to make sure that the semantics is correct. Where the, the ambulance district. And a fire, rural fire protection district have to be told in the center.
Oh.
By statute.
Okay.
Now. What that means is that the Battle Creek Fire District cannot contract. Somebody to provide ambulance service. Now, you notice that threw another word in your service, which is distinctly different than an ambulance district. And that's why I got, why I have to be careful. I don't misquote myself. The district can con, can get. The district is charged, the board of directors of the district is charged with determining how to provide. Ambulance, I don't want some, a different word than service, because service is the technical. They can develop their own ambulance service, and there's a whole section of state law. That describes exactly how an ambulance service has to be organized, operated. What the paperwork has to be, what the personnel have to include, how you can get exemptions. That's all in a service. So like, if I go over to, to Custer, Western Custer, Custer ambulance is a privately. Run nonprofit that gets money from the customer district. And then they collect revenue from, from all impatience. And so, but, but that's a total, you know, they're, they're two totally different entities. Just like the fire district, the Battle Creek Fire District collects tax money. And then we hire the Battle Creek firefighters to operate the station. But, so every year, we rehire them. And probably will continue unless it's grew up. So when you, when you, your question, I kinda. You know, cringe a little bit because there was a word ambulance service in there. And. The, so the district hires the ambulance service, but Battle Creek Fire District cannot.
And do that. Okay, thank you.
That doesn't mean they can't co-staff because they're too private, potentially it could be too private companies. So in Rapid City, some of their ambulances, if you call the ambulance out at the top of Hay Street. You might get a paramedic and a firefighter because they just don't have enough pair, paramedics to go around. And so, that's an option. There could be some co-staffing.
And how many paramedics do we have at our fire department?
Think it's four, but don't quote. It's, we've lost them and gained them and, and uh. I'm not, just not sure. And, and, and again, that's for Keystone and Hermosone, it's four.
Okay.
In theory, we, we should have two on the journey. Every day, all the time, one in the Keystone, one here, but we don't. I'll be totally honest, we're having a hard time. Maintaining the site. We just can't. We, that's the reason we have to go to the op count was just to be able to raise. The salaries for the firefighters because the forest steals everybody as soon as we get them trained. And make them double their wages, why, why would you say that?
Yeah.
Any other questions? So I write down December eleventh. And I assume, what do you start that on?
Six, six thirty eight.
You know, six thirty to eighty. Okay, thank you.
I think, I have a question. Uh, so you're saying, I'm, I'm trying to what, follow up with Linda was. We cannot have an ambulance in our fire department building?
No, I didn't. I stated.
Okay, that's, I guess that's my question. Can we have a fully staffed ambulance in the same building? But not with the fire department. So you're just like gonna have this stall over here instead of making a, another building for, you know?
Yeah, you know, that's theoretically possible, yes. Because again, it's because the. It'd be up to the Battle Creek Fire District. We just rent space to. An ambulance service or to the ambulance district, whichever uh. Makes the most sense. That's the one nice thing about having the way the state has it set up with the district and then you hire. How you want the ambulance service provided. How you want the ambulance service provided, or EMS service provided, might be another saying. Instant amount of flexibility, as long as you meet the statutes, you know, that you have. The correct personnel, the correct paperwork, all that sort of stuff. But but there's been no decisions made at this point of. Of how it would be done.
Right, I guess asking questions.
Because we have to define the boundaries, is problem number one. Then all of a sudden, you know what your valuation is, your, you know, taxing authority, now you can start looking at, well. This is how much money we might have, we might be able to do this, oh, we can't do that, but we can do this.
I know this isn't our meeting, but ha- have you been in touch with other areas to see if they are interested in this? Like you said, the southern part of Pennington County down here, or?
Yeah, I I I've met with Rapid City Fire, you know. As blunt as, you know, you sent us a letter saying you weren't gonna provide it. How much would I have to pay you to get you to change your mind? I talked to Keystone, uh, would you, could you expand your area? For this way, could you put one of your two ambulances here, one in Keystone and one here? We talked to Custer repeatedly, and then we started some dialogue with with. Buffalo Gap Hot Springs, it's Hot Springs has the ambulance service, but Buffalo Gap actually has a district. And they hire Hot Springs. So we've talked to. All this, what do you, what's the word I want? A joining ambulance districts and and driving. And frankly, we could put it out on an RFP and somebody from Eastern River could bid on it. And say, we wanna come in and provide service here, so it's not necessarily restricted to just neighbors. Okay, I don't think that's my scenario, but it's possible.
Alrighty, well, thank you for uh taking some leadership on that Leo and helping to get that done forward. I'm sure it's gonna be real important.
Yeah, I I I kind of glossed over it, that y'all, as soon as we have a bomb, an idea of the approximate boundary. Say we'll provide you information, what you need in terms of the resolution. Municipalities have to agree that they want to be part of the election for the creation of the district. But you can't do that till you know the approximate boundaries of the district. You know, limbo right now.
Okay, thanks Leo. Y'all ready for uh recess here, ten fifteen, let's do a fifteen minute recess, come back at eight thirty? So, uh, yeah.
What do you know, you can tell me?
They can't. Looking to set boundaries and get a resolution. Our presentation is the first step. And we don't need boundaries, we can pass our resolution. So what I wanna do is get us in Bearburn, have one big board meeting. Leo's doing everything he can. And it's one of those things where we can just help. Yeah, I don't know if that would be a thing, because another thing that wasn't brought up. I don't know if it was really brought up in the meeting, because we have Pennington County also that we're looking at. And if the district crosses two counties, you have to have a public hearing. Forum, those of those counties. So in order to have a district. Pennington, you get have to get commissioners from both Pennington and Custer.
That's gonna be a bit.
They have so much more to do than we. That it it that'd be a fair, but that's why I think if he could get a meeting with us and prefer anymore, kind of like come together and have a meeting.
He was so funny, he was so funny, and and I get it, I mean, you know, if if you were. Yeah, I mean, if if you were living in the cities and and you hadn't seen anything named. Somewhere US part, and when you were not conventional, you know, I mean. I get it totally.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up just in case, so everybody could still like, something's up. Somebody out there freaked out, I just. I mean, there is something, but we can, what we can do is just smart it better in our thing for Marshall, what Marshall is. Everybody understands like uh actually put it in the ordinance a little better, we'd be fine. To state what the duties are and then what the actual goals to provide, because. We put it in our ordinance, it would be easy. Nah, you know, to pull it here. I'm not against it, I just, just only because of the only things I've ran into, I was like, oh. Like, as long as we. In the in our ordinance, it's what, you know, what that means, Marshall. And just get the legal description from the CDL, I'm happy with that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change this again. Uh, I put in my bid. Uh, over off of uh Cobb, uh, Pah Sapa. Yeah, so super close, I can get down here super fast when I'm like when I'm not here during the day. My shift's on holiday, my aunt calls me super fast. Couldn't find anything in town, so I was like, I was gonna buy the one on fairgrounds, but he was acting weird.
Imagine that.
Because the realtor, I guess, didn't put something, she pulled it off the market. She wanted only three hundred and something thousand, but I was gonna get her a couple a little bit, because of the barn in the back. And I was like, watch this, I'll and I was gonna buy it, and then she just ate it off the market. So nothing gets you is that realtor that we were using to try to get our. It was, she threatened to do that, but I think the body camera was running the whole time through this. They called me personally from Custer County for me to help them.
Sure, they did, they've dealt with it.
I was like, dude.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're not great.
Where do you live? Okay. So how long have you lived here? Have fun yet? Yeah, you don't have to answer that. Undrowned at nighting for me to eat all of this.
Which I I need to write it down, the statute that has the ambulance.
I think that's a, I think that's a really good start.
Oh, enjoy. Good night Leo, thank you. Yeah, that's one I created.
Are you making graphs and stuff?
Done a lot of graphs.
Once you start doing. That'd be awesome.
It's dozing? Oh, Scott?
Well, and I have to find what.
Y'all ready to get back to it? Get back to it a little bit earlier than I thought at eight twenty eight, let's reconvene. So now we are on, uh, Aaron.
I just wanted to, a couple more things on ambulance, I just wanted to.
Okay.
So one, couple of points that I pulled out of the discussion the other night and then checked the statute is. All municipalities have to pass a resolution before they can be included in the boundary, right, like you said, but they, we don't necessarily need to see the map. We just need to show essentially intent, and I was hoping Scout would still be here so he could look into that. But I was thinking, um, and I don't even know if we need a motion, but Bearburn, as far as I know, is the only other. That would be in, and I was thinking we should reach out to them and maybe see if we can establish some kind of a meeting with them. So that we can talk about it together as the only two municipalities that are gonna be in it, because we need to, we need, we need to. As much as we can help this move forward, the timeline is burning up. And another thing I wanted to mention is, um, with us possibly having some parts of Pennington County annexed in. That would change things a little bit, because when an ambulance boundary crosses two counties. There's a whole separate section of the statute that covers that, where they have to have a joint meeting between the two counties. In order for a district to cross the boundary.
That one, we had talked about that during break a little bit, I had asked Aaron about that. And I said, man, that's gonna be almost impossible with Pennington County, the only way I can see that happening is if. If Pennington County would um put a little bit of time in their regular meeting. And have it at the same time, if that is. Put a little bit of time in their regular meeting and have it at the same time, if that is legally possible. And then we would have to go to their.
Oh, that's.
Commission meeting.
The county one is between. The, the two, the commissioners of each county, if a district is gonna cross the county.
So it's not.
County.
Oh.
Get together.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if any part of Pennington.
I thought it was us and Pennington.
No.
So. Yeah, then. Of course, it might be beneficial enough to them, they'd do it. But anyway, okay. Yeah.
Okay, um. We might have to have a work session on this too at some.
Yeah.
Soon. So, um, we'll talk more offline. Now I'll get a whole. Very very. And see. Need to talk to about. Talk about with them.
See what their, you know, what their opinion is on it at this point.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, thanks for that. So let's move on to finance office. Terry, uh, do you have monthly financials?
Well, I did a new report. As per the request, um. So this was. So I have your revenue by fund and then the expenses by fund and then your net profits lost. And then I had the balance of all of our. Assets, actually, accounts, so. I'm not sure if that's what. Kind of we're looking for.
Uh, this is.
But, um. The one thing on the sewer, I'll note, the, the reason for the loss on the sewer is because we paid out. That final payment to Baroque and now I'll have to turn around and submit that and get that rounding back. So that's why it's showing that.
Oh, okay.
I'll be coming back. The other ones, I think, here. And I think the tip in the general was more or less the, um. The budgets got. And we did those budget supplements. And that's coming from our fine cash.
Yeah. Alrighty, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Thanks for that, Terry. Do you have any department updates?
Um, the only department update I have is so that C D we had with First National Bank for events. And, you know, because of the renovation. So I did get the money. I didn't get that C D, um. Hold out. We made, we made. Just over six, we made six thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-six cents in interest on that C D for the year. I did not get it reinvested and of course not they, I was gonna, or yesterday I was gonna go. And November first rolled around now, of course, Black Hills Federal, their rate's not four percent anymore. Now it's three point seven five, so. So I didn't, so I'm doing some more checking and trying to find, if I can get a better rate, so.
Okay.
And apologize because I did, you know, but getting back last week, I only had Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Good things to do to get ready for the meeting in April. That's so, I didn't get that time. So we did get the interest for that, so.
Okay. I. I think for our motion for the reinvestment. It was. It was at Black Hills Federal because it was the highest at the time. And so we're gonna have to do some more research.
Yeah, I want.
Who was the highest now?
Yeah, I mean, I did still call him today, but I don't know if I got them all and. We have one, but yeah.
Okay, so once we find that out, then we'll have. Rescind that. Former motion and then make a, a new motion to go with.
Yeah.
Whomever is the, this updated.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. No. That's bad. The other thing we had talked about. The, the. Internet and phone cost. So Mount Rushmore telephone is actually. Um, they're leaving, I mean, they have, they're kind of farming out their stuff now. They closed down that. They have their. Box, drop box open, but and you can call that.
The office in.
So Cheryl leaving, I talked to her today, so she's moving to the east side of the state, so. Um, so it might be a good time. I did contact somebody from Midco and got some rates from them, but I probably need either you or Erin. So I mean, we look at it, bear into the Mount Rushmore ones and see where we wanna go. It does look like they may be a little cheaper and maybe this is the time to do it with. Mount Rushmore, you know, changing over like they are, so.
Yeah, you wanna just, uh, send us an email on.
Okay. I'll give you the ball. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll send that to you. And then the only other thing I had, so with, um. Our, um. Health insurance, so this is act renewals. So protocol, we did our, when we did our, um, budgets, I didn't have what the rates were gonna be. They always give these to us late. So of course now. We currently have the, the thousand dollar deductible plan and. And of course, it's gone up. Quite a bit. So it's gonna increase. Right now we're paying a thousand forty-three fifty-seven per month. It's gonna go up to eleven fifty-three fourteen per month. Which is gonna put us over what we budgeted. So I would like to, since I'm the only one on the health plan right now, um. All employees have to be on the same plan. But that was the problem before. I, I'd like to do an H S A. It's a lot less money. My deductible would increase to three thousand from one thousand. So then it comes with a debit card. And I would propose that with some of that savings that you guys have, maybe you'd be willing to put. Either fifty or seventy-five dollars a month on that debit card and then I can also contribute to that to help. My, because my deductible now be three thousand dollars instead of a thousand. That would be, and then it's still. The second sheet I put in though, will show you, you'd still have a surplus and we wouldn't go over the budget with that if we did one of those. And I did talk to the South Community League and they said it's very common for towns or municipalities to contribute to an employee's H S A because you save them money on the premium.
Oh, Aaron.
Yeah, seventy-five bucks, that sounds good. Uh, we're on a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, so we can further discuss them.
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Paying to an H S A three thousand dollar deductible plan with the seventy-five dollar a month contribution to the H S A debit card.
You second it, Donna?
Okay, Erin made a motion, Donna seconded. So just. Just to clarify. We're looking at the thirty-five, the H P thirty-five hundred.
Um.
On this sheet here.
It must be thirty-five. No, it's up. This one does three thousand.
This is what I'm looking at here.
Oh, on that one, yeah.
What are we paying now for a month?
Uh, we're paying a thousand forty-three fifty-seven for, and I have a thousand dollar deductible. But that's gonna increase to eleven fifty-three fourteen, so.
So it'll be a thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so then that would make, that would move our monthly out of pocket for that to be the eight seventy-five to the plan. And then you're also requesting that seventy-five dollars on top of that, um. Going to the H S A account, which is, and that is, so the eight seventy-five, the plus the seventy-five would take us to nine fifty a month. And then we're still less than what we are now at the.
Right.
Was it eleven hundred a month, is what you said?
Right now it's a thousand forty-three fifty-seven.
Okay, thousand forty-three, so we still, we'd be paying.
Still be a hit. You still have extra in that budget, is what I was trying, I didn't want to overspend the budget. I just wanted to try to leave a little bit on. The, the caveat is if you, we get a new employee, they have to go up that same plan. For the family, they don't left. And that was a problem before, you know, former employees didn't wanna do, and I've always had H S A.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, so.
For the town, so.
So the brass tacks on this. And then you get the plan that you. Alright. Uh, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on this one? Any questions, comments? You guys have a. You guys have a comment?
I, I'm just curious, um, you know, lawn state insurance, he had a H S A. And I was just wondering how much, um, the state put in for him? And I don't remember. Is it all right if I call him and ask? Just out of curiosity?
Okay, I suppose.
You suppose?
I'm thinking your deductibles more than, more than tripling. Saving us money.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I, I don't go, I mean, I go once a year to maybe my annual, I mean, I just not gonna live. Right, I'm pretty fortunate and pretty healthy, so.
Right.
And H S A is always worked for me. And then that.
We really like it.
The debit card I can use for dental.
Do they roll over the debit card?
Um, yeah, I. I think. I don't want that. Now I gotta double check, but. I probably don't want to put too much on there, so, but typically they do.
Hey, um. When, when you were working with state and we had the H S A account, did the state put in money into that too or just you? Retired and don't remember a damn thing. Excuse me. Okay. All right. That's all I called about. All right, thanks, bye. He does not remember.
Okay, uh, so any further comment or question on the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Motion carries.
Hi, sir.
All right, motion carries, so on to, uh, approve the operating agreement renewals. And, um, it sounds like Mr. James had an opportunity to go over. The one we have in the packet and that.
The one app in that's included in the package was actually the one that he proposed with the changes. I did ask you about, you know, um, that insurance, Scott. And he said that's pretty typical. But we, I think he did leave it at the, um.
It's on section eight.
And so he said. Yeah, so the five hundred thousand, well, no, this is. That's a good one. So that's the thing, well, because I thought he said he left it as. The higher amount, but this is, this is what our current ones are.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What did they go up to?
Well, when Kent had done that, it went to a million and two million.
Oh, I see. So five hundred and a.
Yeah.
And a million should be enough then.
If he, so when he's. It's one that he made the changes on, he's just saying, um. So the, the liability insurance to this cause is in line with Trans Nationwide Insurance. But he said, however, many small businesses complain that this results in a premium increase, which impacts their bottom line. So I think, so he did leave it.
Right. Okay, well, yeah, he, uh, you know, I spoke at the recess and, and he, uh, requested to go.
Okay.
And so, you know, I said, that's okay, because I, um. He and I talked about this and then he, he said that you did have that copy there, so. Uh, one thing that. We may want to address is since we did on the liquor licenses have the dollar for operating hour. Uh, fee schedule. I think we should, uh, refer to that in here.
Okay.
Maybe it'll be some, the perviaage could be something like, uh, so in section ten A. I'm just kinda giving in a, uh, an opinion here and then we can. Maybe do a motion of, uh. Of approval that's contingent upon him reviewing, uh, these changes and then also any changes for the rest of the operating agreements. Um, so. But it says, uh, said some shall be payable at the rate of three hundred fifty dollars per month. And in the five percent of the purchases, so. Um, on here, it should probably refer to the, uh, fee schedule.
Yeah.
And then. We may also want to put. Which is at the time of the signing of this contract, X amount. And then that. Because that sounds like one of the. The operating agreement holders was concerned that we kinda have just mentioning the fee schedule only. That, that might give the board an opportunity to change the amount after the fact. And so if we have this fee schedule and then also, uh. Put the amount that it is at the time of the signing, I think that would alleviate their concerns and then, but we can also. Keep, uh, operating using our fee schedule.
So the, the, the amount would carry out through that entire contract year.
Yeah.
Very good.
I think that's probably a good way to go if the board agrees.
Yep, I'll agree.
Yeah, so we, so I guess what I'm proposing is, is that the board. Or I guess I'll just make the motion now that move that we, uh. That we approve the agreements. Uh, pending review from, uh, Mr. James and myself to ensure that we have the correct reference to the, uh, new fee schedule. And then also listing what. At, at least in the case of the liquor license, listing what that amount would be per month for that purveyor under their current, uh, hours operating. Current number of operating hours.
I'll second that.
Okay. The seconds. Okay, any discussion on that or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Motion carries. Okay, so, um. Onto fifteen B, rescind the motion. Um. Uh, October twenty-first regarding the donation to the Santa's Village. Yeah, something.
I don't have anything.
No. During the recommendation.
To do what?
So he made a recommendation that we rescind that donation, which if I remember.
Five hundred.
Was five hundred. And that we do a new motion for a, it was two different donations. Um.
Somebody else has already donated, is that? And they don't.
Uh, it was just a suggestion by a citizen that we reconsider and the donation amount and donate a higher amount. Uh, I think that maybe we should have some more discussion offline so it could be all on the same page or make a decision on this one. I think we still have some time, is that correct, Shelley? We still do have some time on that. And what's the, what do you think is a good? Uh, debate on that?
Well, I already learned shopping for some toys and I spent some seven hundred and fifty dollars so far.
You did, okay.
And I am going next to baby Ben Ward.
Yeah. So, and, and as, so, and. My, as far as I'm concerned, if, if the board was to do this, we wouldn't rescind the motion for a lower amount. We wouldn't rescind the motion to then pass a motion for a lower amount. It would be for a higher amount if we, uh, abide by the recommendations from the citizens, so. I mean, I guess I'll just, that's my intent on it or my opinion on the matter. And the rest of the board can, can wait.
I also sent one letter that I have given to you, to businesses and people here in town, the donations too.
I mean. So, and it, and that was a, the last motion was a five hundred dollar donation from the V V B fund. And that's because the Santa's Village brings people to town and can help spur on, uh, extra economic activity. You know, more people coming to town, there's more people buying gasoline and groceries and everything like that on their way in and out, so. You know, I think it's worthwhile for the town to consider supporting this and we already did, uh, a certain level of support at the last meeting. But I guess what I'll do is recommend that we table items B and C upon further review. Uh, for the next meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. Okay. So, when, when's our next meeting again, Terry?
Eighteen.
Two weeks. The eighteenth, so if we had a decision for you by then, that would be okay? Okay, thanks, Shelley.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to new business, on to the appointment of the vacant trustee. And do you have any comments on that, Don?
Well, yes, because when we talked about it, we would, would have that we are taking. Letters of interest, we did not make a motion that we are going to appoint somebody. So at this time, we would like to see this. Be put, uh, a half month or something and then make, then maybe we can make a decision. There's a lot of people, like, Terry got to, uh, for the, a job, other job here, that are completely new people. Not saying that the people that have sent the letters in us are not, but I just feel that we need to have some viewers out there. I, I think we need to have it more out.
Okay, um, does, does anyone else on the board have an opinion?
What, huh, I mean, wasn't it posted on the?
It says letters of in, interest, it's not a motion.
It was advertised for two weeks in the paper and it was been on the website. They had to have them in by last Thursday.
This is a, uh. A board decision, um, when it's an appointed position, that only lasts until. The next, the following election, so this would be only until June, that this position would be held.
Well, as boards, as, as the members of the board, I think, yeah, uh, we should discuss this amongst us.
I'm, I'm just reading letters, so.
If they're not, uh, the people with, uh, those that have sent their letters of interest in, if they would like to. Come up to the podium and, and. Tell us more than I, you know, I forget. But it means we did not make a motion that we were going to. Uh, fill this position with letters of interest is what it was.
Okay, so you're, it sounds to me like your concern is, is that it was. That the letter, the request for the letters was not underneath a board motion, it was just a kind of a, a news item from the. Presidency and the vice presidency, and so um, in your opinion, we should. Do this under a motion.
Right.
And, and put it off for another. Certain amount of time.
Yes, I, that's, that's what I'm, to the district.
Okay, uh, I mean, if, we did get two letters and they are in the packet, I mean, we got one from Trina and we got one from Kathy. So would you, I'm okay, um, if you all would like to come up and introduce yourselves. To, I mean, we pretty much know who you are, but introduce yourselves to the recording and to the rest of the people here and. And talk about maybe why you'd wanna get on the board and what you'd like to, you know, anything you'd like to do. Uh, here, maybe, uh, you know, five minutes each or something if, if you want to, and then, uh, I mean. You know, maybe we'll get a, a motion to approve or, and then we can see how that goes or, uh, motion to a point rather. See how that goes or maybe a motion to table, but, but is that something you guys are interested in doing right now?
Can I make a suggestion, uh, or? I guess I would like to know how the citizens that are in the audience feel about this, do they believe that we should wait? Or do they believe we should carry on?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they've, most of them who have been here for all those meetings also. And know what we've, how long we've been going through this, and I, I guess I just want their opinion on whether we should wait.
But you just said it was a board approval, it was a board's decision.
It is a board decision, it absolutely is, but we work for the citizens and so I want their.
We'd be pretty happy if citizens could make the vote, but we can't.
Um, hold on, uh, will we go Aaron and then Dan and then Mark?
On that point, there are two pathways to fill that, we, we can do an appointment or we can call for a special election. We technically could, but.
And in the past.
Common practice.
Yeah, costs money to do that.
Yeah, costs money and, but, yes, I mean, it just technically is, is a path.
We can get our opinion, but, you know, what we want is impossible at this moment, it would cost money, so.
Okay, uh, Dan?
With the positioning and what you did on the vacating of the other position. We were very clear in the last meetings when you said we're going to apply four letters of interest for the vacated position. Then pointing at this meeting, I, I don't see how that couldn't have been any clearer. And I feel citizens have moved forward with their letters of intent, there was true set up display, it was well advertised. I feel the board needs to react to that opinion tonight and vote in the poll, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other input on that? Any other input from the board?
I, I just wanted to tell Connie that in the past, we have left the position open until the next voting cycle. Um, but that was basically because of the fact that we had no interest, none. Um, so in my opinion, it's wonderful to have the interest, you know, and I believe that, um. Um, it would give whomever we appointed, um. The time to uh, make a name for themselves. We'll see how, we'll see how they react, how they vote, how they interact with the public and with the board. By the time that next election comes up, and then the citizens can definitely have their say.
Yep, uh, so, I mean, would, would either of you like to come up and, and entered, like what we talked about, introduce yourselves and. Kinda go over maybe some of the things you mentioned in the letter? Kathy, would you like to come up?
Hello, I'm Kathy Phelan, and I've lived here in Hermosa for fifteen years and. Uh, I've come to quite a few of the meetings back then, it was kind of itty back then and, um. I didn't enjoy coming to the meetings, in fact, right now, I enjoy coming to them because I see progress. That's going on with our board and with all of our citizens and everything. Um, I'm also, I volunteer a lot, um, I volunteer for feelings of good enough for ten years. Which I really enjoy, I go to, we go to Hill City here in Hermosa, red shirt, and sometimes we even go to Rapid. I'm a people person, I love people, I've worked with people for years, um, I. More or less put myself or people ahead of me of what I, what I enjoy doing, I mean, I've always been. Uh, people pleaser, I guess, pride to be, and uh, anyway, I, I don't know what else, I, I really am in, in, uh. In impressed with what's going on here, and I just wanna uh, learn about what's going on in this town. And if I can help in any way, if we can volunteer in any way and help the older people do whatever that needs to be done. We would be glad to volunteer to help those people out, cuz I myself love older people. I try to do my best with older people and try to help them the best I can, um. I'm pretty outspoken, I, I jumped out of my shell not too long ago.
What did you hear?
But anyway, um, do you have any questions for me that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there any uh, specific committees you'd be interested in serving on?
Oh, okay, now, um, such as what?
Marshall or the. The streets and the sewer and.
Water.
Water and.
Well, a lot of that stuff, like water and sewer, uh, my husband that had passed away, uh, was a superintendent for, um, the water and sewer. And I've learned, I learned a lot from him on those issues, um, I have done construction work, I. I've done the majority, a lot of different, um, work for different things and, uh. As far as opportunities go, I'm always there to put myself forward to learning, I love learning. And uh, doing, doing my jobs and stuff like that.
Okay, sound great. Any other questions for Kathy from the board or from the, the audience here? Okay, well, I don't see any other questions, so thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Uh, Trina, would you like to come up, please?
I've been coming to the meetings for more than two years, except last spring, I took a little bit of time off. I think I've been a pretty regular contender. I, um, I love what the board's doing, and I said in my letter, communications and board movement, I feel like, um. I had the opportunity to volunteer and uh, redesign the website, I really enjoyed that, um. And, and I really like what Aaron's done, I mean, it could even better, so that's exciting, and I like that. Aspect of this is that it's a team effort. And the goal is to make the infrastructure of the town, uh, stable enough for growth. And, um, I just assumed that I would be on the, uh, sewer committee, water committee, because that's where everybody starts. And, and I'm okay with that, and that's interesting to me, Steve, uh, is my husband Steve, he, uh, worked for the. City of Rapid in the water, so I've heard a lot of things, and that, he told me the same problems with the, uh, the truck that you're. You know, be driving, good luck, um. Anyway, you know, that it could easily blow out and produce water in people's homes, so. There's a lot of responsibility, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of changes. So, I mean, you guys kind of know us and you, you know what we've done, so I trust your decision. Uh, whatever you decide to do that way, but, um, my thought was that I would be on that committee and, and the streets committee, but.
Okay, um, does anyone have any questions for Trina? Uh, Dan?
I just wanna say, um, I like in your letter, my tent was, as far as his. Ability, so where with this new board, there's a lot of that involvement and a lot of, uh. Involved on what they've done here, facilities method and coming up and being able to understand that, I think, with the new generation. Really makes a big difference and, and your enthusiasm about being on the committees is huge, so. I appreciate that, I appreciate it, in fact.
Yeah, the silver smith is very exciting.
Yeah, I, I like that we can, that Aaron can pull it up right here for us and we can, we can all see exactly. Where in the town we're talking about and exactly what part of our infrastructure that, to which we're, we're referring in, it's a. It's an important tool just for that, but then also when we actually fully flesh it out and, and we have contractors. They can, uh, you know, enter and, and everything, the work orders, um, you know, enter and complete them and. And we can use that to its full tracking ability too, and it's really gonna, uh. It's really gonna expand our capabilities in that regard, so anyways, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, um. So, I mean, you already mentioned the committee assignments that you'd like to have. You know, kinda winding down on the lagoons and everything, so, uh, the, the sewer, this is for, for both of you, you know, the, the sewer. Um, basically, we're transitioning now into hammering and the jetting and then wrapping up the treatment plant. And there's, um, maybe some change, proposed changes coming along for that, we'll have to see, but. Uh, you know, we're getting the new transmission, uh, that's gonna be, uh, installed here pretty soon. And we'll get that thing turning again, so, but, uh, and, and this is kind of. Maybe I should have said this in my sewer product updates, but, uh, you know, A- Anthony has mentioned that. You know, we're passing our tests basically before it even goes through the, the treatment plant, just based on our lagoon situation, and so. Uh, we are doing very well in that regard, and, uh, so I think, uh. I think any, anybody, any addition to this board would be, you know, welcome, uh, you know, there's a lot of work to do. To share the load with, with somebody is gonna be beneficial for everybody, so I, I guess that's all I have to say. In that regard, so, uh, any specifically for Trina, since she's up there, is there any other questions for her? I don't see any, so thank you, Trina, so I guess at this time I'll call for nominations. Uh, for the vacant position, does anyone wanna make a nomination, Linda?
I would like to nominate Trina. That position, and I, I would like to give a explanation for that, um, she put in for the last one, I do believe, and, um.
Hold on, let's, uh, we have a second for that?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess I'll second it. So, Trina, it's nominated, okay?
Um, she put in for the last time and has, uh, without a doubt, been here for a lot of our meetings and had a lot of input. Um, I didn't even know that Kathy was interested, um, until I seen the letter here, I mean, I, you've been at many meetings. Yeah, well, and, and we don't know each other personally, so I, I mean, I wouldn't have known that, but. I, I appreciate that and look forward to seeing their name on the ballot next year, um, but I, I would like to give Trina the position. Um, because of her intent has been strong for over a year.
Okay, yeah, and I seconded it because I know the last time we did an appointment round. Uh, it was between her and Aaron, and obviously he was the one that was chosen at that time. And she has shown in, uh, intent for a while to be on the board, and so that's why I chose her for, um. I chose to second her nomination, but I'd also like to echo Linda's sentiment that no matter what happens tonight, um. Whomever does or doesn't get, uh. Appointed to the position, there's always the election coming up and then you can. You know, it goes right to the people and then that's, uh. Obviously, that's, be the town's intent and the people's intent on whomever they wish to have in that position, so. I mean, that's obviously the best way to do it, but I think getting somebody in here now is. Uh, is good for that person and good for the town in that, uh. That person can, can kinda cut their teeth on learning the board position. Uh, and I know that's how I got on the board originally, made it through an election. And I know, and obviously, I, I just mentioned Aaron, he got onto the board in a, in that way and also made it through an election too, so. Uh. Yeah, well, just the first one, but. Anyways, so, uh, is there any, any other comment or question on Trina's nomination? We've kinda had some commentary there, so, um, I guess, Aaron?
Yeah, um, so. This is, this is, this is a lot tougher than I expected it to be.
It puts you out there in front of the public.
Yeah.
Which every, every, um, vote that you make, I mean, that's what the people are, are. Voting for you for, if you're voting the way they vote, so, yeah, it, but it, it does, it puts you right out there.
Yeah, I think, I think I, I have. Yeah, I think, I think I, I have. I don't think I had any idea what it was like to be on board until I was on the board. I think. I think there are things you don't realize that you're gonna have to deal with. The scrutiny is. It can get really brutal. It can be, it can get really, really brutal sometimes. And. I just. I have, you two are both like really, really kind people and this, I don't know, this board is brutal.
It'll toughen you up, I think is what he's saying.
Worried about making you suffer with us. You know, there's, we're, just to say quiet part out loud, we've been in this sort of major transition phase. Undeniably for a year. The lagoons are coming together, the, the well is kicking off. The streets program is, is online. We've got a marshal. So much has changed. I don't know, I just. It's, it's, this is tough. This is tough cuz we're kind of planning the future of the next six months. And then possibly years after that. So it's just, there's nothing easy about it.
Okay. Donna, did you have any input on this? I, I know you were kind of jumping the gun, but.
Yeah, I still don't think we are.
Do you have any comment on the, on Trina's candidates or nomination?
I, no, no comment.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, if we don't have any other comments or questions, then I guess we'll go to the vote. So. All those in favor of appointing Trina as the, in the vacant trustee position. Sorry about that. All those in favor of appointing Trina in the vacant trustee position, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two ayes, all opposed?
Nay.
All right, two to two? Okay, so would anyone like to nominate Kathy for the position?
It's a tough decision. Because, like I said, we did not say that we were going to appoint. It said letters of interest and that is what Scott needs.
Well, it's layers of intent for the purposes.
Said letters of interest for the position.
Letters of intent for the vacant trustee position. So. Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, I'll nominate.
Okay, Aaron nominated Kathy. We have a second. Donna seconds the nomination. Okay, would you like to introduce your nomination? Just open the discussion on your nomination. Is there any, anything more you'd like to say on it?
Well, Kathy kind of said it. She, she, all right, I'm gonna tell you all a story. So when, when we were talking about the last appointment that was made, which was mine, I, I remember distinctly one person voting against it. It was Donna. And here we are a year ago and we get along just real well. But Donna's, Donna speaks her mind even when it makes people uncomfortable sometimes. And I really like that. And Kathy has a tendency to do that too. And I really like it. It just, I like it. So that's all.
Okay. All righty, Donna?
That's what I like about Kathy too. She's not afraid to tell it the way it is. And I think she'd be a good answer to the town board.
Okay. Linda, did you have any comments or anything?
Well, I, I've got one already.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think no matter who it is, either between Kathy or Trina, that either one would do a great job. Mark, did you have a comment?
I do. It's about the whole thing, you know, putting it on probably isn't the right thing to do here. There is a statutory requirement. To do it when somebody is already, it doesn't say how long you have, but. I mean, we're five members. We should have a fifth member, but we can't really. We got to fit it. It, it's the only right thing to do. And again, there is same statutory requirements that that position you fill. I have just.
Okay, thank you on that. All right, any other comments from the audience?
I have a comment.
Trina?
I think either one of us would be great, but the comment. When you say I'd like this person because they speak their mind, I've been speaking my mind in this term for two years, more than a year. And I, that's why I wanna be on the board because I do speak my mind and I, I think I have a value. And. Yeah, and I've, I've put in my time. So, anyway. I, like I said before, I respect the board's decision because you guys are in the position. You know the situation and I trust your decisions.
Okay, thanks, Trina. Kathy?
Well, like Aaron said, I do speak my mind. I've been speaking my mind now at these meetings for, what? Fifteen years for, since I've lived here. You know, I say what's on my mind and whether they listen or not. You know, but I mean, I'm very compassionate about a lot of things and. So. You know, I guess maybe women do speak their minds a lot.
One thing to keep in mind too is. You know, it's good to be compassionate and there's definitely a place for that. And then also, you know, being up here making some of these decisions. Sometimes the right decision is not the most compassionate one, you know. And so. Just like to point that out, Kathy, or sorry, Connie?
Well, I just feel Kathy up there, she's been in the community so long, she knows just about everybody that lives in this town. So she probably a lot like Aaron, put herself up there with the community and interacting with people. And they bring a lot of value to the board.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Connie. Any other comments? Hey, seeing none? All those in favor of? Kathy's nomination, please say aye. All opposed? None opposed? Any abstentions? It's all abstaining. So we have two ayes and one abstention on that one. So motion to nominate fails. So.
Just kidding. That's a joke.
No, it's okay. So I know at this point. I think maybe what we need to do is kick it to the next meeting and then. We'll see if we can get a different outcome then and, and still try to fill the position we need to. Aaron?
Should we? Reopen? Should, should we make it known that we're willing to accept the letters until the appointment is made? It was last time we did the cutoff and we really don't have any reason why we have to. Should we just leave it open until we make the appointment? Because.
I, I mean, I'm.
In the event that this stalls again.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. Are you guys okay with that out there to? To call out for in case there's anybody else that wants to come out and, and not, obviously not against any, either Kathy or Trina, but if there's somebody else that wants to come in and. And, and put their hat in the ring. I, I don't have a problem with that. So would you like to make that motion, Donna?
I make a motion that we extend. Getting letters of intent to. Still on the town board of Hermosa. I'd like to see it. Terry, put it in the paper. Maybe on the community, the Hermosa community page. I don't know. I don't know. There, you know. And we got two good candidates, but I just think that. I just think that we should have a little more. Help. And you're sending it to the win.
Should we do it until we make the appointment? Until the seat is filled?
What, until the?
This vote alone should make everybody realize we need that fifth seat filled. So I, I think that I, I don't have any problem with leaving the letters of intent open. That, that's fine by me, but. I hope that this matter can be settled at the next meeting. Yeah, so.
This is not something I want to do.
How about until the twenty eighth of November and then we vote on that fourth or November second of December?
I think we need to vote at the next meeting. That gives them two more weeks. If anybody has any interest, it's already been published. I, I just think.
So how about by five P M. on the seventeenth? We're debating on the eighteenth. Okay, Donna makes the motion. Do we have a second? It's all seconded. Eleven seventeen at five P M. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, very good. Must, you know what? We must have some pretty good candidates that are evenly matched. So. Anyways, hopefully we'll get this resolved next meeting. And thank you again for putting your letters in, ladies. And we, we hope that we can. Resolve it next meeting. So let's move on to the next item of new business, approve the use of the triple B money to fund prizes for the annual Christmas lighting contest.
That was another question and I didn't get into the packet.
Okay, well, let's, I guess, let's table that one. Are you guys good with tabling that one and doing some more research on that? Go over the emails?
Yeah, you know, prizes for after, after Christmas essentially.
So let's move that one to the next meeting also. Okay, very good. Well, that brings us to items from constituents. So is there any, anything from the audience that they'd like to say? You don't see anything out? Oh, Dan?
Have they're doing anything on that water or something about with the lawyer? Getting that checked out, getting our raised water for the museum and the church.
Yeah.
I don't think I'd be able to shut.
Okay.
If we don't get the water, I'm not gonna shut it off.
Yeah.
I can't afford twenty dollars to go in the water.
Right, yeah. You have to start drinking gasoline. Jumper anyway.
That way you can just let it fire.
All right, yeah, we'll check it on that. Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah.
Cause nobody was in and swallowed it for a month.
Okay, so is there any, anything else from the audience? Dan? Other Dan?
And I think the thing is, is always helping out the nonprofits is a good thing. But changing policy sets it up for residents on the other commercials, whether it's nonprofit or not. And so what we've done in the past is actually do a donation to them. To be able to cover that water bill so we don't have to change policy or procedure. So you don't have a precedent set for others. Where, as what was mentioned before, how many nonprofits are in the area that would ask for the same. There's several lots. So caution against that. It looks more to donation and pay for the water bill than change policy.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Hey, any trustee input? Anyone like to go first, Darren?
Thanks for coming. It was a long meeting. But we, we got some work done. And. Yeah.
Okay, Linda, did you have any?
Thank you.
Thank you.
For being our president, running the meeting. And it's just, it is just so nice. To be here and be able to discuss and, and have the citizens input and help and. And it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Donna, did you have any input?
No, it was a good meeting. You got some things accomplished, so that's good.
Is that it? Yeah, good meeting. I'll, I guess I'll make the motion to adjourn at, what is it?
Nine twenty six.
Donna, a second. So those in favor? My motion carries. Thank you. But then, I did. Really not supposed to use my computer for this stuff.